Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Bristol Town Council meeting of August 3rd. If you could all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republican Party, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Welcome. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, the first item on the agenda is the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second, motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approves. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. May I request that we move two items to the beginning of the agenda?
Yes.
H2 and I1.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to move forward I1 and H2. Am I correct with that?
Yes.
Excellent. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We'll start with the citation for Jerome Squartrito, which I have right here. I'm going to take a moment and read this. Jerome passed away, as most, if not all of you know. And this citation was, the idea was presented by Attorney John Rigo and Richard Ruggiero, who is, was Jerome's friend for a very long time, and also a joint member of the planning board. Okay, take a moment just to read this. So citation from the town of Bristol, posthumously acknowledged in memory of Jerome Squartrito. In recognition of the continuous years of volunteerism in service to the town of Bristol, Jerome Squartrito was committed to serving his town as a member of the Bristol zoning board for 22 years and a member of the Bristol Planning Board for 23 years. Jerome Squartrito pledged to build a pathway to make our community more resilient and provide means of relief and understanding to the challenges met by our residents. In making this presentation, the Honorable Town Administrator and the Honorable Town Council, the Town of Bristol, State of Rhode Island, in accordance with the authority vested in them by the citizens of Bristol, and on behalf of all Bristolians, recognize the enduring contributions of our community volunteers and are forever indebted to Mr. Jerome Squartrito for his unwavering dedication of time, talent, energy, in serving our community. I know there are some family members of Jerome that are here right now, and I'd like to say on behalf of the council and the people of Bristol, thank you. Thank you for, I knew Jerome like a lot of people knew Jerome. And I have, I thought about this a lot, about what I was going to say tonight, and I thought this citation is well done, Madam Clerk. What keeps coming back in my mind was, if you ever wondered what Jerome thought of you, all you had to do was ask. And I loved that about him, and I know a lot of people did too. His honesty, his integrity, his, I called them salt of the earth, I believe, at the last meeting. And I'd like my colleagues, certainly, if you'd like to share anything. But just a wonderful person, someone who gave so much time, effort, and energy, been involved in so many conversations with him, talking about changes that were made to, or potential changes with zoning ordinances, and his reoccurring theme about protecting the taxpayers and protecting property rights of those who own those properties, right? So changes in things, he would, he would, he would push back, and so did his colleagues too. And I should also note that Jerome passed while he was an existing planning board member. So that's an important also point to make. So colleagues, did you want to share anything?
You sounded pretty good, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Yeah, I think you summed it up nicely.
Is, who from the family may I give this to in recognition of Jerome's, gosh, how many, what did I say? Forty-five years? Oh, there you are. I didn't see you there. And we're going to stand for you today. I often say it on behalf of this council and the town. But we are who we are in large part from the volunteerism. And Jerome was a perfect example of that. So again, thank you. Madam Clerk.
Would you like to go with H2 first or the I1?
Tony.
Either one. Well, we could go with H2 since we have them.
It might as well.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, the next item on the agenda is H2. This is the presentation of the restored Thomas Shepherd portrait.
I'd also like to recognize our prior clerk, Louis Cirillo. How are you?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the town council. My name is Louis Cirillo. I live at 28 Central Street. I'm also pleased to speak on behalf of those involved in this very gratifying project. I can see that you have a hefty agenda, and I'm sensitive to the need, to be brief. The story of the portrait of the Reverend Thomas Shepherd DD is a rather interesting one. And the Historical Society invited me to speak about it at their upcoming meeting on September 19th in the Harrisoff Room of the Library. That meeting will be open to the public. I'm not sure about the time right now. But for this evening, I'm going to give you the Reader's Digest version of this remarkable artifact. The portrait of Reverend Shepherd, the very first superintendent of the public schools in Bristol, was a gift to the town from an anonymous donor with the intention that it should be displayed in the newly constructed Byfield School. It is the work of Jane Stewart, the daughter of the celebrated American portrait artist Gilbert Stewart. The school was built in 1872, and the portrait was accepted by the town council in January of 1874. So both the school and the portrait are now in the era of their collective sesqui, sesqui centennial, 150 years old. I'm not sure exactly when this particular portrait was removed from display, but about a dozen portraits had been stored by the school district in a basement storage area sometime after the regional school district was established. I learned of the location of the portraits in early 2005 and approached Town Administrator Diane Medeiris to obtain permission to request that the portraits be returned to the town and be displayed in the Burnside Building. The schools and the town administrator agreed to my idea, and the portraits were delivered to Town Hall. Most were in need of cleaning and some had been damaged. We were able to clean the portraits and frames and make some minor repairs. The portraits were hung in the Burnside Building where they continue to be enjoyed. Unfortunately, the portrait of Thomas Shepherd was found to be badly damaged, and the decision was made to hang it carefully in a safe place to prevent any further deterioration and hopefully restore it in the future so that it could be one day displayed for public view. It was held in my office, so he was kind of my roommate for 16 years. About two years ago, I had a visit from Superintendent Emeritus Enes Bisbono, who's gracing us here with his presence this evening, who expressed great interest in finally getting the portrait restored. Mr. Bisbono obtained the very capable assistance of Mrs. Charlotte Burnham, right here in the front row, who was an extremely effective fundraiser in achieving the funds necessary to complete the restoration. Wasn't an easy task, I'm sure. Mr. Bisbono and Mrs. Burnham found great resource in their selection of Peter Williams Museum Services of Boston, the firm which completed the restoration. The town certainly owes a great debt of gratitude to Superintendent Bisbono and Mrs. Burnham, without whose vision and hard work this presentation would not be possible. A hearty thank you also belongs to everyone who contributed to the restoration fund, if I may. I was told by Mike Davis, this is a kind of a before picture. He said if I held this up, he would be able to zero in on it. Let's hope you can see it. It probably is more generous appearing than the portrait did actually look. But, you know, certainly, it was in very desperate need of restoration. And I'd be happy to pass this around so that people can see what it looked like beforehand. It's just an ephemeral copy. But I thought it would be appropriate, since Mr. Bisbono and Mrs. Burnham, it's tremendous amount of work to get this done, that they should be, have the honor of unveiling the portrait, which is next to me. So if they could come forward. My wife generously donated her 4th of July tablecloth for this purpose. And on behalf of all of us, we are very pleased to return this historical artifact to the town. Thank you.
If we could all look that good when we're that old. Or be brought back to that, right? If we look that, my god, outstanding. It looks wonderful. Thank you for your efforts and energies. Mr. Administrator, did you want to share?
His eyes are following us.
Mr. Administrator, who's roommate is he now? Lou said it was his roommate. Is he going to be somebody else's roommate?
We talked to Mr. Cirillo, talked with the committee, and we think for now the home would be back in the Burnside Building with the other set, and eventually back to Byfield School someday.
Okay.
It's appropriate. But for now, next week it'll be secured over in the Byfield, Burnside Building.
Great. Beautiful.
We'll have it in Town Hall for a bit?
Try to secure it here. Yeah, just.
Just so the, if the public would, I'm sure they would like to see it, so.
We might put it up on the wall so that it's properly secured.
Excellent. Okay. I believe Lou may have left, but he shared with me the journey that it took to pick the portrait from Boston to bring it to Bristol. And they had to be an emacsee vehicle because of the material that was used to restore the portrait. So it was quite an interesting journey. But I'll spare the details for now.
Well, I would like to thank Mr. Cirillo, Ms. Burnham, and Mr. Bisbono for your efforts, and things like this are, it's keeping the history alive. So thank you. Thank you for what you've done. Mary?
I just wanted to say the same thing. I think it's great that we have, like, a committee that Lou was able to get together, and, you know, Mr. Bisbono and Charlotte, you were able to get this done and raise the money. And I'm sure that we have other portraits that, you know, need to do. And it'd be nice if there's a little, maybe, I can't remember if they're over there in the building or not, but like a little, quick little history on who the people are as well. Because thank you so much for doing that. It's awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you to the town council for their generous donation as well.
Happy to do so.
Yeah. Excellent job.
We just need a receiving file at this.
Motion to receive and file.
Second, motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to receive and file. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you again.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, the next item on the agenda is I1. This is Town Administrator attempting with the recognition of two Eagle Scouts from Bristol Troop Six. This is Nathan Dietrich and Nathan Sinis.
I was going to ask him to stand right next to Thomas Shepherd, if you don't mind. We don't need any bad movie events on that. So welcome. So typically, what we've done in the past is we've gone to an Eagle Scout Court of Honor. And I'm glad that we were able to celebrate your success. And I'd like you, if you could just expand upon it just a second. First, your name is just outstanding. Nice job with that. Second, congratulations on Eagle Scout. We talk about this at the Court of Honors all the time. It is a tremendous thing to achieve, and especially at your age, to be committed and to stay committed. And I know this is also part of your mom, your dad, your leaders, your scout leaders, that helped you get there. But could you take a moment and share with this council and the public how you got there? No stress, no pressure, really.
Well, I would say that my journey as an Eagle Scout started the day I came home in elementary school. I forget, I forget what grade, was it second grade, first grade? Sometime in there, with a flyer for the local Cub Scout pack. And for those who don't know, Cub Scouts is sort of the, I guess, younger version of Boy Scouts, where, you know, you start getting into there, and then once you get to a certain age, I believe it's 10, I want to say, you will transition over to being a Boy Scout. And, um, so there, you know, multiple ranks in there. And I guess, I would say the first inspiration to really do this was my dad. Because he, he was the one, he's Eagle Scout himself. He was super excited when I came home asking, you know, "Dad, can I be a Cub Scout?" And he's the one who is sort of, I guess, set this into motion. He really, you know, hyped me up. He shared stories. He became a Cub Scout leader, actually. And then, once I moved into Boy Scouts, he actually became one of the scout leaders in my scout, my Boy Scout troop. And it hasn't all been him. It certainly hasn't all been him. I would also, I've also received support, obviously, from other scouts, my mom, grandparents, and, you know, scout leaders, you know, all sort of. And it's been, it's been me too. I don't want to say that it's been all other people.
We're getting to the crux of it now, aren't we?
But a combination of all of that has led to me becoming an Eagle Scout. And actually, I'd like to mention one person in particular that I can specifically state really pushed me, whether intentionally or not, to become an Eagle Scout. And that is Peter Labonte, for those of you who might know of him. Because I remember one day in my, you know, sitting in our meeting place, I forget which one we were in at that point, but, and he said to me, you know, you know, Nathan, a lot of people don't make it to Eagle Scout, you know? A lot of people, you know, give up along the way. But I think that you're one of the ones who'll make it. You know, you strike me as the kind of person who can do that. And, you know, when I, when I almost, I almost didn't make it to Eagle. I came very close because, for a number of personal reasons, there were things in my life that I had to prioritize over that. But it was those words that came back to me that spurred me to come back to scouting and complete it, and I'm so glad I did.
Who was your project, Nathan?
My project was the restoration of Paul Park, which is, it's right across from the high school. There's the baseball field. You may, you may know about that. And it was, it was sort of a, once again, inspired by my parents. Because there used to be trails there before this. In fact, the original trails were from another Eagle Scout project that was, I want to say something like 40 years ago. But they hadn't been maintained. They were, there was a bridge, and you sort of go across the bridge, and originally, that was sort of it. It was just brush. And so what I did is, first off, I cleared out all of the original trails. I went through and redid those trails, you know, cleared off all the brush. But then I also cleared out a second section of trails that was left over from something else, I assume. And then I connected the two. So I would say probably tripled, maybe, the size of the trail system. And it should be clear right now. It can get a little bit, it can get a little bit muddy. So if you, if you would ever consider going, bring some shoes that you don't necessarily care about getting, getting all dirty. But other than that, it's a very nice place, very great walk. Little buggy, but not too bad.
Any other questions on the count?
Could I say one quick thing?
Of course.
And that is, well, first of all, congratulations on achieving Eagle. And thank you for the hard work on the town's property there. But I do really want to take a moment because your, the work, the comment you made about Ms. Labonte and how that resonated with you, stuck with you. Those of us who work with kids and, you know, and have school programs, education, whatever, you say things and say things and say things and have conversations, and you hope something clicks, or students remember something. And I think that is such a huge tribute to why those of us who do work with students or young people, those are the moments we hope happen all the time. And, or at least once in a while, put it that way. So thank you for bringing that up and mentioning that as well. That was so important. Thank you.
Welcome.
Good job, Nathan.
So on behalf. On behalf of the council, the administrator, the clerk, and truly the whole town, this is a plaque recognizing your achievement. If you'd come up, so I can give it to you. Is that Dad, too? Congratulations, Dad. You should be very proud. And Mom, congratulations, Mom. And just need a motion to receive and file, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Congratulations again.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, the next item on the agenda is the submission of the town council minutes from July 13, 2022.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, the next item on the agenda is B1. This is the public hearing. This is directed community development, Williamson, in regard to the application for zone map change of Stephen Genario, managing member of the Genario Family Realty LLC for 374 and 380 Medicom Avenue, from M Manufacturing to MMU Medicom Mixed Use Designation.
As the clerk said, this is a public hearing, so I'm going to open up the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak in favor?
Thank you, Mr. President. Tough act to follow, by the way, that young gentleman. My name is Scott Partington. I'm an attorney. I'm representative of Genario Family Realty LLC in this regard. My offices are in 2176 Mendon Road in Cumberland, Rhode Island. As indicated by the clerk in her introductory remarks, that this involves Medicom Avenue, two pieces of property right now, lots 374 and 380. Those are the property addresses. At present, one lot is a little below an acre, one is a little above an acre. Each lot has one single-story, light industrial, commercial building present. And at present, also, one of the two buildings is vacant. The other has, I believe, a printing business in it, right? And basically, the, you know, I read the recommendation from the planning board, and rarely, you know, when you, when you come to a zone change situation, rarely do you have as much of the competence of plan centering on a particular area as this does. The, the comprehensive, your comprehensive plan is explicit. I mean, the desire for the MMU to spread throughout the Medicom Avenue area. So given the statements that were made by planning and the relevant items of the land use element of the comp plan, which were pretty much laid out in the planning board's recommendation, that, along with a couple of elements in the economic development element of the plan as well, about destination businesses and the like, and the desires and the goals that are being sought by the MMU, I, I believe this is, should be a real good change. I mean, zone changes sometimes can be a little difficult because it's a concern about what you open, what you open other property, what the property is up to. But in this case, I think that the comprehensive plan, which is your blueprint, which is your bible, is pretty clear about that area and the desire to make that, you know, sort of an overlay with MMU. And more importantly, it does now bring this, these properties in compliance with your future land use map, and again, with your comprehensive plan. I have Mr. Genario here. If there's any specific questions, I know this is a public hearing, and I'm certainly not, obviously, not giving testimony. So, but if there's anything you need from him in the way of testimony, I'd be glad to present it.
Counsel? No, but we can ask questions if there is something that needs clarity afterwards, but.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone to speak against? Is there anyone to speak against? Is there anyone to speak against?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to close the public hearing and the discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Counsel?
Well, I think this change provides orderly growth and development, which is recognized in our comprehensive plans, so I'm in support. So I'd make a motion to approve the zone map change from Manufacturing to MMU for 374 and 380 Medicom Avenue.
I'll second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve. Discussion?
Yes, I just have a question, actually, for Diane. Would I consider Page 4 of the packet that was given, B1?
Tony, if you could just hold on one second. The solicitor wanted to make, go ahead.
Well, no, I was just going to say that you, when you come back your motion to incorporate the recommendation and findings of the planning board in your decision.
So why don't we just stop right there? Tim, would you amend your motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second, and then?
Okay. Discussion, please.
Okay. Just, it says the comprehensive plan also informs that the town council has already rezoned to, to rezoning, two areas, I mean, two neighboring Medicom Avenue properties. Do you recall what those two others were?
That was Jackie's Galaxy and the lot behind Jackie's Galaxy.
Okay.
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah. It's actually across the street.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other discussion? I'd like to add, I reached out to Diane. We're changing, we're proposing that this change from Manufacturing to MMU Medicom Mixed Use is what it means, right? I, and I believe the council too, is a huge proponent of manufacturing. And removing that concerned me. Now, I should say that I'm not opposed to making this change, just so you don't feel like you have to jump up and say, "Wait a minute." What I asked Diane to do was to reach out to the planning board in our normal process, have the planning board come back to this council with recommendations of potential additional manufacturing possibilities. So you can manufacture currently in MMU, but it is in specific instances. So for example, maritime, there was some arts and culture, I'll call it that. But I wanted to make, I wanted this council to consider if there should be additional manufacturing. But I do 100% agree this is in keeping with the comprehensive plan. It's spelled out specifically in it, and this seems like an appropriate change for this area. So, planning board meets in September. We should see something in front of this council's potential changes, probably end of September and October. That's it.
So do you think it's necessary to incorporate that? Maybe we should incorporate that?
No, I just wanted to make that point, and I thought, I know this council is expressed serious concern about manufacturing, more about making sure that it continues. One of the magic, one of the many things. One of the magic, one of the many things about Bristol that are magic, but one of them is its diversification. It's residential and it's business and it's mixed use and it's manufacturing. It's a lot of what is, what makes Bristol wonderful. So I don't believe this goes against that. I just want us to continue to make sure that we are more inclusive with manufacturing possibilities. I think we all do, so. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, the next item on business is C1. This is ordinance 2022-9 to Chapter 16 of Motor Vehicles and Traffic. And this is to add a no parking box on Lion Avenue. This is first reading.
Motion to approve first reading. Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony. This constitutes first reading. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Why does it sound like we're in Fenway right now? There's this two-second echo. Can you hear that?
Yeah.
Sure.
Mister, maybe Mr. Shepherd's playing some tricks on us?
Me? You think so?
Maybe, I think so.
Now batting number 72, 72. Oh, they're watching Steve, actually.
That's why he does one, just play in his office.
Something out of an aggregate, a packet of Christie.
That Eagle Scout was awesome. I'm going to check out those, the paths and and how nice that he recognized all those people that made who, who he was, who he is today. Really, yeah, really great speech.
Agreed.
I'm glad he got to himself, though, you know?
Yeah, I know.
If it's unfixable, it's a, wow, that's much better. Thank you. 1-800-Tech Support, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, the next item on the agenda is D1. And this is William Connolly doing business as luxury goods, et cetera, 1200 Avenue. This is a request for a junk and second-hand dealer's license, and this is called for public hearing on August 24th.
Motion to call for a public hearing on August 24th.
Second. Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to call for public hearings. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, the next item for business is D2. This is Elena Patel doing business as Club K9 of 64 Blue Boulevard. This is a request for a dog kennel license.
They sent all the positive recommendations. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve. Is Elena here?
She was.
Oh, well, this is where we usually give you a 30-second commercial if you'd like it. No? You look like you didn't want it, so I just wanted to give you that out, that's all. So I'm sure you would have done a great job. Yes, that's, that's what it is. All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Please tell Elena that you did such an outstanding job that we unanimously approve it, so.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, the next item of business is D3. This is Jordan Sawyer of doing business as Brick Pizza Company of 500 Wood Street, Unit 211. This is a request for an amendment to the ordinance of Section 17-824A to modify the granted life closing time and to extend the hours of liquor sales from 11:00 PM to 1:00 AM on days of Sunday.
Evening, council.
If you could state your full name and address for the record?
Jordan Sawyer, 45, Kikumutev.
Welcome. Tell us why you're in front of us, please.
So we are seeking an hour change to extend our business hours to 1:00 AM, the 1:00 AM liquor license. We are looking to implement a late-night food menu and extend our food offerings until midnight. Our original business model relied very heavily on the, on a service of seven days, lunch and dinner. Recent labor shortages, which is nationwide across the entire restaurant industry, has made it very difficult for us to get to seven days lunch and dinner. So we are looking to maximize the five days that we are open. The five is, I have a long list of reasons I can.
If you want to just hit the high ones and.
Absolutely, no. So we are looking to maximize on the days that we are open. Like I said, the labor shortages across the country in the restaurant industry have been very difficult. We were able to add lunches on the weekends, Saturday and Sunday, which have not turned out to be exactly what we anticipated. And we are finding that our clientele is in much more higher demand of a late-night menu rather than a lunch menu.
Well, I. Mr. Solicitor?
Sorry. Sorry, Tony. Um, I, I, but I just heard something here and I think needs clarification.
Certainly, go ahead.
Um, the indication was that this late-night meal menu would be until midnight, and they were asking for a license till 1:00, and that is not legal. The requirements for BV license are that you serve food when you serve alcohol. So if they're going to serve alcohol till 1:00, they have to serve food till 1:00. If they're going to stop serving food at noon, at midnight, they have to serve, stop the alcohol at midnight as well.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarity.
My understanding was, when I read the ordinance, is that there is an hour of afterwards from, from when food stops until liquor can stop being served.
There's a, there's an hour where you can, don't have to close and throw people out. But if anybody comes in and asks for food when you're serving alcohol, you're supposed to have food available. It does not have to be your complete menu, but there is supposed to be food available whenever you are serving alcohol, according to the state regulations.
Okay.
Thank you.
We, I mean, I could, I don't want to list off other businesses, but I know that's not the current quota for many businesses across the town. I don't want to throw anyone under the bus, but I know that is not the current route that many of, many businesses take. I know many do stop, most, most kitchens close 10:00 or 11:00 and still offer liquor until 1:00 AM.
Well, if, if they, if we, if, if, if we receive a complaint about it, we will be investigating about it. As I said, you, you've said this on the record, so I just want to make it clear that, that those are the requirements. As I said, you do not have to maintain a full menu, but you have to have some food available for people while you're serving alcohol.
Andy, take a moment. Food can be described as a million different things, like a bag of chips.
Well, yeah, and, and, and I still remember the, the old liquor license control administrator from about 20 years ago in a hearing saying that, he said, "You can get a loaf of bread and some lunch meats and cheese and a bag of, and a jar of mayonnaise and ketchup." And so saying that, that's enough. It doesn't have to be meat, but it is, it has to be more than pickled eggs or a bag of pretzels or something like that.
So.
No, I'm going to let Tony go first since he started.
Thank you. You said you're open five days?
Correct.
Okay, okay, because reading the information I have, it says Monday through Sunday, so I'm assuming that's seven days.
So we are currently open Thursday to Monday. We are closed Tuesday, Wednesday.
Okay, that clarifies things a little bit because what it said was request on Monday through Sunday.
I would love to be open seven days. Unfortunately, that, it's, the labor pool is not allowed me to do so.
Uh, as far as the serving, you're now looking to be doing this outdoors. If it's granted, it's not to be done outdoors. Am I correct?
No.
Until 1:00?
No, not at all, just inside.
Right, so there would be inside from 11:00, I mean, after 11:00, you would not be serving outside.
Correct. We, that's the, the ordinance on noise, I believe.
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
And so, Jordan, knowing that to be in compliance with the current ordinance based on what we just went over with the solicitor, does that change your decision in any way? Can you adhere and serve food up until 1:00 AM?
That may change for, that we do from 1:00 AM, rather back that to midnight, call last call at midnight, if that's the case. But either way, we are looking to extend our late-night menu until midnight.
Okay, so, and, so what I'm hearing is set of 1:00 AM midnight would be acceptable.
Yes.
So I'll take a second first. You're doing an outstanding job over there. You were in front of this council for that liquor license, and we granted a full license because you had a history, you personally had a history at Oyster Bar, which you're also doing an outstanding job over there. I'm not aware of any issues from the police department, chief? So the chief just confirmed that, which I'm not surprised at all. Both the level of service and the lack of issues is commendable. So I, I know for all of us, I say thank you for that. Thank you for being a great neighbor. For myself, and I think Tim just kind of touched on a little bit, for myself, I am, I would say, too hesitant for 1:00 AM. I like what is, we've gone away from the 1:00 AM in a lot of places. We changed our ordinance to say 11:00 because we wanted, there's something that happens, and I've been there at 12:00 and 1:00. There's something that happens between 12:00 and 1:00 that doesn't happen between 11:00 and 12:00. And I feel like, I'll give you an example. In fact, I was talking to the clerk about this recently. We had the same example for each other, is that my wife and I will go out to dinner, whether it's in town or, or out of town, but then come back into town to have a drink before we go home, maybe dessert there. So, and there are a few places that we can go that are quiet and not as many as we would hope. So I'm amenable to 12:00. I would also be amenable to a six-month review. I would also be amenable to, if we're going to update our new license ordinance, that it would say that, that, that you can't go to 12:00, you can't even be considered to go to 12:00 until you've been open for at least six months, for example. But I would certainly support 12:00, and it would be not every night. I think the weekend, and the weekend to me is obviously Friday and Saturday, but Thursday, Friday and Saturday, I would also be amenable to. And have a six-month review. Have you come back? I have no doubt that you continue what you do right now. Then, then we'll just, we'll put that, if this council sees fit to do that. I, I don't see any issues at all with you moving forward with that. I'm concerned, and I think I speak for all of us, and my colleagues can speak for themselves if they disagree, of the neighborhood, not your neighborhood, neighborhoods in general. This is one of many. You are part of a great project over there, and you are a large part of its success. But there's others in that project that also either have liquor license or will be asking us for them. And what we do here will have some big impacts there, but I don't stop there, and I don't think my colleagues do either. Looking at this townwide, I like that we have only a few that are open until 1:00. It allows, and chief, please expand on this if I'm off base, but it allows response at 1:00. It, it helps with dispersment of people that are coming out of the bars at 1:00. And it keeps it in certain areas, so we don't have the police in multiple areas at 1:00. I think you and your restaurant would be fine. It's when they leave and they congregate with others, and it happens at 1:00. I think it's important that neighbors are, have that quiet time and that expectation is a reasonable one. So that's a really long way to saying, I can get to 12:00. I don't know what my colleagues think, but I would, I would propose Thursday, Friday and Saturday, six-month review and, and also six-month minimum open if we are changing our, our new license ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, I, I agree with a lot of what you said. I, I think especially with respect to Jordan. I think you've been a great ambassador for the, the restaurant community. I remember when you came here the first time to have the liquor license transferred over to the Bristol Oyster Bar and, and all the great information that you provided us for the liquor license when you were trying to get it for Brick Pizza as well. And, and of course, we saw positive recommendations come forward for the 1:00, 1:00 AM closing. But with the menu the way it is, it sounds like the only option that we have is for the 12:00 closing right here, but the only caveat I have is that, my only disagreement with that might be that just, Jordan would be able to come back if he needed to, if you adjusted your menu at some future date and time or something like that, to have that 12:00 time adjusted to 1:00 if he chooses to. Am I correct?
Uh, yes. Uh, one of the reasons we are pushing for this as well, we noticed during the winter, during basketball and hockey season, we noticed that if the Celtics or the Bruins were playing, many of our regulars would often leave at halftime or after the second period in hockey to go somewhere where they knew they could watch the end of the game, which left us giving up business to our competitors and, you know, leaving us at a disadvantage to be competitive in the market.
Mr. Chairman, I, I concur with Aaron's statement. However, you know, in reviewing, as it was proposed already, you know, come back in a six-month. If we do the 12:00, then at that point in time, we'll give an opportunity to visit that and say, hey, things are going well, why not expand that and go to 1:00?
And with that in mind, I, I don't want to add also that when I first applied for the original license, there were some things that I included in my, when asking for it, but we have stuck to, in a community-minded conservative approach to serving alcohol. We have not been serving shots. We didn't serve Long Island iced teas, Irish carlms, any, any alcoholic beverage with an above-average alcohol content to, to kind of hinder or prevent the any excessive drinking or anything from getting into, you know, irresponsible consumption.
Just a couple of comments first before I begin. I think to your point about the establishments that do or do not serve food for those, those hours, perhaps our solicitor should write a letter to all of our liquor license holders, reminding them of that regulation. I think that, you know, we need a motion for that, but I would ask that that take place. Because that does, you know, I know that when we've been sitting here, we've always said it has to be food. It can't just be like you're going to fry up some fries, you know, it can't be fries, it can't be chips, it can't be pretzels. Has to be like real food that you could order. So having said that, I just want to say, I think you've done a great job with the restaurant. I think it's beautiful in there, the food is good. But I am going to be, I'm sorry to say, I'm not in agreement with the 1:00 timeframe, and I don't know about the 12:00. And the reason is that we've really deliberately tried to get away from the 1:00 times in a lot of our, you know, providing licenses. So we provide licenses, as you know, on a case-by-case basis, where other towns have a set number, and then you have to wait, and there's still some people think, oh, we're going to wait, let me get a license. We, we take it on a case-by-case basis, and I think we want to see nice restaurants that people want to come in and have a drink and do whatever they want to do and eat, and not to have like where it's going to turn into like a bar atmosphere. And so that's like a fear that I, that I'm concerned, what I'm concerned about in general. And certainly in your, in your neighborhood, there are already long, long-held establishments that have those later license times. And I know that there's a lot of students that go, live up on State Street, I don't know, you know, I don't know if you see them or not, because the restaurant's down here, but you don't necessarily live here, I do. And they all sort of float on up that way towards their like last call. I'm not saying they would be going to Brick, because I mean, I'd be able to afford to go to Brick, but I'm just saying that, that's one issue. The other issue that I'm very, very, very concerned about, I just want to make this clear so that you, you understand where I'm coming from. You know, Unity Park is, you know, we're just really getting that off the ground. And as pointed out already, you, you're a big part of that success. But there's already at least one license holder in there, one, one other liquor license holder. There's potentially a few more. And I think whatever we do for you, we have to do for everybody else in there. And it's, it's also adjacent to senior housing and, and assisted living housing, and additional housing that's potentially going to be built in that complex. And I just don't see this as a good match, like having, I don't, I wouldn't want to see a bunch of lit license holders till 1:00, what becomes like a party place, like at certain, even if it's only certain times of the year. And that really, really, really concerns me. And that's nothing to do with you personally, because you've done a great job. That's just something that, because for every time we're here, anytime anybody comes here, everybody wants to be, nobody wants their competitor to be, to have an advantage. So, well, this place has it till 1:00, so I need it till 1:00. This place serves beer and wine at lunch, I need to serve beer and wine at lunch, you know, just, it's like, you never get ahead of that. And I'm, I'm very concerned about this particular location and that I feel like we'd be going backwards to do a 1:00 license. And I'm not sure what I think about the 12:00, because I think that would only be half an hour, am I correct? Because I think that would only be half an hour, am I correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And, but not every single day. I mean, I realize you're not open every single day. Like I have to say that the worker shortage and the, it's very hard to get used to. What restaurants, what places, what coffee shops are open, what days? How many days are all closed? It's very hard to like keep track of all of that. But I am, I'm, I'm very worried. And I just want to state that because I don't think that that's the direction the council should be going in.
Mr. Chairman.
I hope you don't throw me out of your restaurant.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Jordan, I just want to say, you know, you had a great report from the PD. I think you're doing a bang-up job at that restaurant. It, it looks fantastic. Great experience and it's a great addition to our town. This council and the town administrator are extremely business-friendly. So we want you to be extremely successful in what you're, what you're doing. And we want you to stay in business. And I understand inflation is kicking up and things are costing more. And you have to keep your prices competitive and we, we all have to, we all have to move. And we have to do what we have to do to survive, right? Based on the good report, I'd like to make a motion to refer the solicitor to amend the ordinance. From 11:00 PM to midnight from Wednesday to Sunday. My understanding is you're closed Monday, Tuesday, correct?
Closed Tuesday, Wednesday.
Tuesday, Wednesday.
We are open on Mondays.
You are, okay. So Monday, and then it would be, you, you're closed Tuesday, Wednesday. And then you'd be open Thursday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday. To refer that to the solicitor to amend the ordinance with a six-month review.
Second. I'm, I'm sorry, could you give me clarity on that, on those times? Again, I'm.
So we're going to make a motion to refer to the solicitor to amend the ordinance from 11:00 PM to midnight? And that would be for Monday. He's closed Tuesday and Wednesday. So it'd be for Thursday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday. And we would have a six-month review.
And then, okay, so Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
And, and Monday, because he's, because he's closed Tuesday and Wednesday, yep.
And then it was seconded by Aaron. Discussion, go ahead, Aaron.
Okay.
I will say that, since it's every day that it's open, you just gave it to me for every day that it's open, that's your motion, not just the weekend. That should maybe just be every day because we don't know if it's going to be able to open that Tuesday or Wednesday. Right now, we haven't wanted to serve all those days.
That is correct.
Yeah.
You know, I, I will not support that for every day. Certainly maybe consider it on the weekend days, but just to go to do it, I don't think we should make the exception of the days that it's practically closed. But that may change at least if we were.
Well, I'm getting a little more confused. So let's see, so the ordinance should be changed right across the board for every day. But not necessarily granted for, for, you know, for the business every day, correct?
I'm granting it for the days that he's open.
But, so I'll tell you what, let's get some clarity on this and I think I can help. So the ordinance applies to all new licenses. And then, once we change the ordinance to allow a later, excuse me, a later close date. Then Brick or anybody else could come in front of this council and apply for that additional hours. So what's being, what's in front of us this evening is not just Brick. It's to change the ordinance that controls new liquor licenses. Yours is a new liquor license when this ordinance was in place. So if the, what I heard, and maybe we can clean it up. Is that you're proposing that the close time would go from 11:00 until 12:00. And then we'll take it on a case-by-case basis on each establishment that's in front of us. Is that a fair way of?
That is fair way, yeah, because I'd like to address Jordan, but I'm not looking to address everybody.
And you're referring it over to, your proposal is to refer to the solicitor to write that ordinance? And, and Aaron, you seconded that? Okay, so, are we clear on that now?
Okay, so we actually blended the two. So we are making a modification on the ordinance and also granting the, the time.
So the, the first step would be granting the ordinance. Once the ordinance passes, then, well, Jordan, you're in front of us. When Jordan comes in front of us again, when the ordinance passes, I would assume the day that it passes. And ask for additional hours of operation. So we have to pass the ordinance first. Once that happens, then Jordan or anybody else can come in front of this council and ask for additional hours.
That, that's what I thought. I thought there was a two-step process. One was about the ordinance and not grant the time at the current time, you know.
So we won't, right, so this evening would be to start the process for an ordinance, which will require a first and second reading, which will do that. And then once, if it passes, then Jordan or anyone else can come in front of us. But he's asking us to change the ordinance, so that could be possible. Mr. Solicitor.
Yes, the, the clerk was indicating to me and that he's also asked for the specific increase. For his establishment. And the question is whether he needs to wait till after the ordinance is enacted to refile that request. Or whether we can essentially continue that. So it could be then scheduled for a public hearing at the same time we've got the, the second reading of the ordinance itself.
Unless the council disagrees, I see no objection to having it run concurrently. Said another way, we don't have to go through another step.
Yeah, it's, it's efficient. It's an efficient process that way.
Okay, so that's what's in front of us.
I just was going to, for, more for the benefit of perhaps the other establishment owners that are out there watching this. I did hear Councilwoman Porella's thing, we'll send the notice. But I'll also just tell you that the specific section of the law and the specific language. It's the Liquor Control Administration Department of Business Regulation. Their Regulation 1.4.5 subsection C. And talks about, that's where it talks about the majority of the business has to be in food as opposed to alcohol. And it specifically says, these foods must be offered for sale during all times. That alcoholic beverages are sold and consumed on the license premises. Then there's also subsection E, and that was the question that you would ask. And that says, licensees shall be presumed to meet the requirements of this provision by offering food at a sandwich level. As opposed to offering solely snack foods, including but not limited to potato chips, pretzels, pickled eggs, pizza strips. Stufffees and crackers and cheese. So all of that long list of stuff is not enough. Those are snack foods, that's not enough. It is the quote-unquote sandwich level, which is required while the alcohol is.
Were you planning on serving pickled eggs?
Cross my mind.
If you're into, pickled eggs are historically, the bars that didn't have a license to serve any food at all are allowed to have pickled eggs. That was apparently a, a breakfast item when people would come in for their alcohol and.
Could be a big hit, Jordan.
I mean, on pizza?
Pieces of bread with it, right?
All right, so we had a motion and a second to amend the ordinance to 12 o'clock close time. It also included, so we'll run that timeline for your request also concurrently. Mary had mentioned, and it's, I don't think we need a motion for it, but it also that the solicitor will send out. A reminder to our business owners that, of these requirements. And we can take next steps on that if necessary. I hope not. I hope it just ends right there. Was there anything else? Did I miss anything? Okay.
Now, we're doing a six-month review on that as well.
Thank you for that.
Yes, yeah, that's part of the motion, six months review.
Anything else? Okay, hearing none, other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. You too.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, the next item on the agenda is E1. This is the private investigator license renewals for 2022, 2023.
Based on the recommendation, I move that we approve it.
Second. Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Would everybody speak up if I'd like to talk better? We can't hear Melissa.
What did you say?
The next item on the agenda is F1. This is Sedalia Hopper for 18 Ryan Avenue. This is request for removal of accessible parking space, this is second reading.
Motion to approve the second reading.
Second. Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve. Any discussion?
Thank you. We need those parking spaces.
Thank you for saying that. Yes, we're always willing to discuss putting them there. And we appreciate when you bring it to our attention when they're no longer needed. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
So Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is F2. This is Patty Nanna from the Fourth of July Committee. This is a request for permission to sell and serve alcoholic beverages at the Bristol Maritime Center for the annual wine tasting fundraiser on September 29.
Let me go motion that we approve it. And also to follow all the rules and regulations.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to approve. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is F3. This is Jack, Jack Ringland from First Congregational Church. This is a request for no parking box in front of the Walkway Apron on 300 High Street.
Make a motion to approve.
So this approval would be, I would assume, referring to the solicitor to create an ordinance. For the no parking box, correct? Do we need an ordinance for that?
Yeah. I thought it just needed to be repainted.
No. So it's, it's one of those cleanups. So there always used to be a parking box there. And then when they asked for it to be repainted, it's not in the ordinance. So they actually have to put it in the ordinance for them to have the parking box.
Add the space to the ordinance 16-43.
So could we restate that motion just to refer?
Motion to refer to the, to the solicitor to add the space to ordinance 16-143.
Second. Motion made by Tim, seconded by Aaron to refer to the solicitor to create or update that ordinance. Any other discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just in reading this, you know, is that's where you will approve the restriping. The, just the tone of the, the request didn't fly too well with me. Okay. How it's worded, yes. It was just that it more direct than a request.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is G1. This is Harbor Commission Advisory Committee. This is three terms to expire August 2025. We have Robert Bresslin and Robert Campenella both not seeking reappointment. We have Paul Kerber with interest in reappointment. And we also have Pamela Romano, who we just hear, who's looking for interest in appointment.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept the two folks who are resigning with a letter of thank you for their service. Reappoint Paul and send an interview for Pam.
Second.
May I also suggest that we advertise for that open position if there's anyone else that's interested?
So, so agreed.
Second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is G2. This is the Post Retirement Benefit Fund Board of Trustees. This is one term set to expire August 2025. And we have Peter Kewa with interest in reappointment.
Motion to reappoint.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Mary to reappoint Peter. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Did you hear that, Peter?
Congratulations. You're signed back up. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, the next item of business is G3. This is the Bristol Planning Board. This is one term to expire April 2023. And this is a request to advertise.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to advertise. Are any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is G4. This is the Historic District Commission. This is for a line auxiliary member, term to expire July 2025. And we have Sue Church with interest in appointment.
Madam Clerk, did we already advertise this open position?
We have.
We have, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to appoint Sue Church. I mean, usually we do an interview, but she certainly, she's certainly no stranger to this process. And she was a staff member to this board for many, many years.
I'll second it.
We had a motion made by Mary, seconded by Tony to appoint Sue Church to the auxiliary member position. Is there any other discussion?
I concur, yeah.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is H1. And this is continued from July 13, 2022. This is for deliberation and voting only. On the application for zoning modifications, zone map change for Arthur Sullivan, Brady Sullivan Properties LLC. For the Bristol Yarn Mill Development for 125 Thane Street, WPUD. Waterfront Urban Rehab Development Project seeking modifications to a conditional zoning change for density of 98 units to 127 units. For minimum commercial space of 22,000 square feet to 6,300 square feet. For off-street parking dimensions of 10 feet wide to 9 feet wide. For lane parking strips of double lane markings, signaling markings. And the request for ordinance revisions to chapter 28 zoning comprehensive zoning code and map revision, section 28-284 subsection D2.
Heck of an agenda. My goodness. So this council, we had public hearing at our last meeting. We heard a lot from the public and this council deliberated afterwards. Primarily focusing on the affordable housing. We received in our packet a written decision from the solicitor. But I'd like to open up to my colleagues first, unless there's, I'd actually like to propose something if I may. The, I don't, we approved and we were unanimous on it with 20% for affordable housing. I do believe that that should not change at all. We also said that we wanted, in essence, 13 physical units. And then the remaining units would be fee in lieu of. I also believe that that should not change. And just for, I just wanted to also make a point that, I believe we all agree. That improving this property is extremely important to that area and just the town in general. Russell Carey and, and his family have owned that property for a very long time. They were a phenomenal employer of many, many people, including my great-grandpa or grandparents. And probably maybe people that you know or people that you're related to, maybe you. It has been an important part. It's been a lot of discussion for many, many years. Multiple opportunities presented, and this seems to be a wonderful next step. There's been a lot of efforts made by the planning board. And also Director of Community Development with steering it through that process and sometimes bumping. But we are here now. So what I wanted to propose with all of that was that we change not the amount of physical units, not the 127, none of that. But make available additional off-site as we do for all other projects. Example is Hope Street has the Longfield House. And it was approved for off-site affordable housing. And I would like to propose that, that it still have the majority in, I'm going to call it the brick building, just to keep it simple. Of at least, I don't know, six or seven there and, but have some off-site as some flexibility on it. I do not want to change the amount. I think the amount's important and we all agree. Other than that, that would be the only change I'd like to propose. I see it's going over well, so. I'm, I'm, I tend not to make motions. I can.
What do I think of it? Or are you wanting, are you waiting for somebody to make a motion?
I'll, I'll second that.
Well, I didn't make a motion. I'm happy to make it. I just made a motion. I don't typically, but I'll make that motion, sure.
So I'll just comment on it.
So Tony seconded discussion. Go ahead, Mary.
I really think it's a really bad idea with all due respect, Mr. Chairman. Because what, I think we put a lot of thought into this. We put a lot of discussion. We heard from a lot of people. We did a lot of research in terms of, you know, many of us did, in terms of like housing and affordable housing and what that means. And I don't really think, I think it was deliberate that we, that we put that for 10, at least 10 units in the building. because people should be able to live wherever they choose. And so I think that's important. And I think if we go back and open this whole thing up and change it, because this is part of what defining the fact is. I think it leaves it, I think everybody would have a different configuration. For example, everything that I've researched and looked at and talked to people at like, you know, Housing Works RI and so forth. One of the worst things we can be doing is fee in lieu of. Because we're never going to buy units for $40,000. So we're going to change this mix and go back into this, which was sort of seemed to be at the time a good. I hate to use this word, so I'm not sure it's exactly compromised, but it seemed to be what we were going to be able to do the last meeting. Now we're going to go back in and start changing things around. It specifically says here on page three of defining fact revised conditions, three off-site units, 10 units in the building, and so many units, 13 units to be in fee of lieu. We're going to start tinkering around with these. I think we'd all want to make changes. I would not want to see as many units in fee as fee of lieu. Because Bristol does not get a good deal on that. So I'm very concerned about going back and sort of tinkering around with this and making adjustments. I think we heard a lot, we did a lot, we were all prepared for that meeting, and I don't think that it should be changed at this point. So that's just my view on that.
So I appreciate that, Mary, and I, I think my, the key point is that the numbers in, don't change. We'll make sure that those, and I know you understood this, but just worth staying again, is that the physical units would stay that. We all agree. We all, we got to that point. We, I guess we had unified agreement that 20% was correct, and I think we agreed, I don't know if it was unified, but I guess it was, of the, of the break. I think it was a reasonable aspect of it. I don't think that this change that I'm proposing is, is a big change. I also, I appreciate the word tinker because I think it is. It's a small change, and it makes sure that those units are still there. And I guess I also think that if we do it for other properties, then it's reasonable to do it for this. And our ordinances are outstanding on this, and it speaks to that the units have to be indistinguishable from market units. And that is a, that's tremendously important to me, too, is that a affordable unit cannot be a lesser or almost. It must be indistinguishable. So I'm confident that our ordinances and our systems will make sure that those things are, excuse the word, policed correctly because we do it in other properties. And I believe that this one piece does not substantively change what we generally agree on.
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I can, I find myself siding with Mary, I think, on this a little bit. I don't think I'd be able to vote for anything that's not in front of us right now. What we talked about at the last meeting, and for me, represented the bare minimum of the mix of onsite and offsite that I'd be willing to support. So for me, the findings of fact would, I'd like to vote in support of them. And one of the other things I kind of think about as we have to make these types of decisions is that there are a lot of people after we've put this mix of offsite and onsite that were actually kind of excited that we had been able to come to some sort of agreement about that particular mix. And then the other thing that I can't seem to look past is the fact that we're kind of in the middle of a housing crisis right now, and we're at 5.79% of affordable housing here in Bristol. And the minute that these units go up, 127 units, what ends up happening is we start going in the other direction in terms of that 5.79%. We might end up going 4%. I don't know how long it's going to take to construct offsite buildings or anything like that. I don't know if it's going to take a year. I don't know if it's going to take two years for anything like that to happen. And then the other thing that we talked about was that it kind of feels like there was a density bonus that the developer got in exchange for some of these affordable housing agreements that we, we came to. And so, you know, for me, it's, I would rather have the onsite. The onsite, I think, is really important to me. I think that anytime you do offsite, what ends up happening is they're affordable housing homes. They're branded that way. If you have onsite, you don't know if somebody walks through that door of the Robin rug building, whether they live in an affordable unit or if they live in a market unit. And so I, I think for me, that's, that's something that is kind of guided me on the reason why I would support the findings of facts as we have written them. So.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say I, I tend to agree with Councilwoman Prella and Councilman Lay in the finding of facts as they stand. I think it's a balanced approach of where we stand right now. If we move more additional offsite units, what I worry about is that the developer has, is unable to find those spaces or has to figure out because things are so tight, has to find those offsite affordable spaces, and they can't do that for some time. So we end up in a situation where we go maybe years or two years where we're, we're still waiting for those additional units to come on board because there isn't any housing available for them to acquire or to even just property to buy, putting dollars and cents together. So I feel like they have a, they're going to gain this amazing building. The three units are across the street on Thames. They're there, and those 10 units are going to be right in Robin Rug. We are sure that those are going to be, those are going to happen, and we're assuring our community that these affordable housing percentages are going to be met. So I, I just happen to be, I'd like to stay with the finding of facts.
I must tell you that with quick math, I hear three people that have concerns, and I'll tell you this, I like this project, and I would, I would rather this council move forward than get stuck here. So I'm happy to rescind my motion. I believe that some of the things that were said are, are, I don't think we need to be concerned about affordable housing being built because it would be required as part of the project. So we have systems in place to make sure that these things happen, but as you can hear from my tone, I want this to move forward more than I want that flexibility put in there. So I'm happy to rescind it because I want, I loved what happened at our last meeting. I loved our unified approach, and I think it's important that we continue that direction. So with as much concern as I've heard, I'm going to rescind my motion and ask for a new motion.
Oh, I'll make a motion to adopt the findings of facts from the solicitor as stated on all three documents. Yeah, all three documents. Second.
Mr. Solicitor, is there anything that, other than what Tim just expressed that we need in that motion?
Um, no, I think you can, you can adopt it. It's as written, it's a motion to approve, which includes your findings. And it also includes specific findings with regard to the planning board as to why findings of clear error, as to why you're differing from the planning board's recommendation, and then the revised conditions. So I think you can have a motion to adopt it as written.
Motion to adopt, adopt the finding of facts as written.
Second. So motion made by Tim, seconded by Aaron. Is there any other?
May I just note for the record that's, I guess it's item H1. It happens to be a, you have copies of it, but it happens to be a page 195 of the packet. Just to clarify the document we're talking about.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is I2, and this is Councilman Lay in regards to proclamation to consider Bristol a Bristol, Bristol a Purple Heart Town.
So a couple of weeks ago, Councilman Sweeney and I had a constituent that reached out to us about designating Bristol as a Purple Heart Town. What we figured out pretty quickly after reaching out to Steve Scuba and Wally Coelho was that something like this was already in the works. And so it was just a matter of getting it on, on the agenda before Purple Heart Day. And it just so happens that I believe Purple Heart Day is in four days, so the timing on this is perfect. Here's what this designation will mean. It means we will continue to honor those members of our military who have been wounded or paid the ultimate sacrifice in combat. It means we will ensure that we never forget the sacrifices made by our men and women in uniform and that we will continue to appreciate the sacrifices our Purple Heart recipients made in defending our freedoms and that we acknowledge them for their courage and show them the honor and support that they've earned. Lastly, the one, another point that I'd like to make is that I believe in our hearts. We've always been a Purple Heart Town. We don't need the installation of highway signs to, to make that so. But what this proclamation does is that it affirms what we, what's always been evident, and it reminds all those entering our community that we value the sacrifices of our Purple Heart recipients. And so with that being said, I wanted to turn this over to Wally Coelho and Carl Antonovich is over here, and they're going to tell us a little bit about some of the work that they've been doing to get it to where we're at right now.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. First of all, thank you all for this, and thank you, Councilman Lay, for stepping us up. I'm Wally Coelho, President of Bristol Veterans Council. I'm also the State of Rhode Island DAV Commander.
Carl?
That's right behind me, is our VFW 237 post commander. This was started a few years ago when, on two, on August 7, 2019, Governor Raimondo declared Rhode Island a Purple Heart State, joining 44 other states in this, and the island of Guam. This entire project was truly a group effort with many individuals and local representatives, community members, and our veterans. The effort was spearheaded by our Department of Rhode Island VFW, Matt McCoy, and Senior Vice Commander at the time, Tiger Patrick, who is now the State Commander for VFW. As he told you, what the Purple Heart is awarded for being wounded or killed in action against an enemy of the United States. The purpose of the Purple Heart Trail is to create a symbolic and honorary system of roads, highways, bridges, and other monuments that give tribute to the men and women who gave the ultimate sacrifice or came home broken. It's always hard. The Purple Heart Trail was established in 1992, believe this or not, but it was congressly sanctioned by the Military Order of Purple Heart to be a symbolic trail throughout all 50 states to commemorate and honor men and women who have wounded and given their lives in combat while serving in the US forces. Presently, the Purple Heart Trail runs through East Greenwich, North Kingston, South Kingston, Narragansett, Charleston, Westerly, Portsmouth, Newport, and Middletown. Bristol, as a, as a Rhode Island Purple Heart Town, will serve as a fitting reminder of the sacrifices made by these devoted and patriotic individuals who put their self in harm's way. These well-traveled roads will serve as a living memorial to our brave and dedicated veterans. Surviving Purple Heart veterans are everyday community members silently, silently suffering from the physical and psychological scars of war. They're out there just keeping themselves, and they're not asking for anything. But it is our hope that seeing a Purple Heart sign placed throughout the towns, these small tokens of gratitude will hopefully carry a world of meaning for these individuals. We'll need time to try to identify some of the Purple Heart recipients that we, because we do not have a number, a central registry here in Bristol, but we are going to try to identify some so that we can honor them at a ceremony to be determined. Excuse me. The National Purple Heart Hall of Honor estimates that there have been about 1.8 million Purple Hearts awarded throughout history. So that's a big one. And I'd be remiss if I did not acknowledge the town of Bristol's respect for all veterans on a daily basis. It's obvious every way you look around. But personally, as a combat veteran, it's important for me to honor my brothers and sisters who took the fall and came home broken. So thank you.
Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that would be, I'll make a motion to, I'll make a motion to approve the proclamation and then refer it to the town administrator to work with the Bristol Veterans Council on the installation of signs.
Second. There's like four seconds. We all second.
Can I say something?
Not yet. So we had a second from, tell me who seconded, please? All of us? I can't.
Mary.
Or Mary? Okay, so the clerk has pointed to Mary as the second. So we had a motion by Tim, seconded by Mary. Peter, you may go.
I just want to say I wasn't aware of what Aaron Lay was trying to do this evening, and I wasn't aware of the fact that the, Mr. Antonovich and his, his friend would be up here speaking in favor of this program, but I strongly support it. As an Navy, retired Navy guy, I never got shot at, never had the experience or had, had, had to have the sad experience of, of engaging in combat, but we have a resident in Bristol that I'm sure most of you know. His name is Arthur Maderis. He's 102 years old. He's a, he's a survivor of the Battle of Hickman Forest, which immediately preceded the Battle of the Bulge. He's had a Silver Star, Bronze Star, and three Purple Hearts. And I would certainly suggest that Arthur be on your list of those who need to be accepted, rewarded. Yeah. And he was very disappointed he didn't get invited again this year. He said, I thought, I'd like fighting again at convertible. Thank you.
Thank you. So you can hear that at home, but Arthur is 102 and plays golf three days a week.
Wow.
That's why he's 102.
It's crazy.
That's right. So we had a motion made by Tim, seconded by Mary. Is there any other discussion? I'm sorry. Aaron made the motion, seconded by Mary. Is there any other discussion?
I just want to thank Councilman Lay for getting this on the agenda, and what I didn't know is Purple Heart was one of the first military medals given out to all ranks, and I just think it's fitting. Bristol will be a Purple Heart Town since we cherish our veterans so much. So thank you, Councilman Lay, getting this on the agenda.
I may just very briefly, I think Walter touched on it, the fact that we don't know at this point how many Purple Hearts we have in Bristol. Am I correct in that? But I know we'll make an effort to find those. Awesome. I know you will. I know you will. As soon as you step out that door.
I would just like to say thank you to Aaron Lay to, for sponsoring this against going.
Thank you guys for getting it started.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you. A blast.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is I3, and this is Sarah Hassel, Accountant for the Town of Bristol, with the account fund proposal, Colt Fund.
No stress at all.
So we have Tom Woods, the Facility Director from Bristol Warren Regional School District. He's here. They would wish to use the Colt Funds to make some improvements, some plaster and, and painting mainly in the auditorium of the Colt Building. Accountant Hassel looked at the policy and looked at the fund performance, and that's in the memo she provided to you. And it is in keeping with the policy and with the, the earnings the last three years. So it's an appropriate, appears to be an appropriate use of the funds. But Mr. Woods is here. If he, maybe he could come up and explain what the project is and, and why they're requesting the funds.
Mr. Woods?
All right. So as, as mentioned, I'm Tom Wood, Director of Facilities for the Bristol Warren Regional School. And the request is made because we've had some deferred maintenance on Colt over the last couple of years, and specifically we have two incidences that we're trying to improve. One is that we had a roof leak over the Colt Auditorium portion, which caused some water damage inside the building. And so we were able to stop the water penetration last year and repair the roof, but it caused some damage to the ornamental plaster and paint on the interior of the building, and that's why we'd like to have some assistance in repairing. In addition to that, in the last six months, the school's been very sensitive to security, and so they've asked us to take a, a look at making sure the exterior doors are secure to the building. And so we have a contractor who is willing to do a historic preservation of the doors. I mean, the request from the school committee was to replace the doors, but we're not looking to replace them. We want to actually just maintain the doors that are there. But it requires some sensitive carpentry work to, to replace some broken moldings and trims of the doors, be able to restore them so that they're, they're stronger, the hinges, and they are more secure. And then just doing a little bit of painting to patch up those repairs when they're made. So it's a combination of those two projects that we're looking to get some funding on.
Counsel.
And then I hear correctly that the water penetration was corrected. I mean, because obviously these two things that I'm looking at, this had to come obviously from water penetration. Am I correct?
Correct. So what we discovered in doing a little investigation is that there's the sloped man-side roof. There's a flat portion of the roof on top of the auditorium, which is a rubber EPDM roof. What we discovered is that a bird of prey, whether it be an owl or a hawk, was using it as a lunchroom and that there were talon marks on there, about 16 locations where they just ripped through the rubber membrane on the roof, which we were able to repair. they just ripped through the rubber membrane on the roof, which we were able to repair. And we've been working on keeping the birds off the roof since then.
How big is this bird?
I don't know, but the talon grips were, you know, probably about three inches long. Again, there were 16 patches we had to do, and it was probably an owl or a hawk.
So I think this is absolutely appropriate for the Colt Fund to use it. Actually, the Colt Fund does say that maintenance is not part of it, and it actually calls out painting. But in this instance, because the plaster has to be repaired, and you obviously want to bring it to its original condition, I would not make a distinction that this is paint. I would make a distinction, this is repair. So I think it's extremely appropriate, and it's such a beautiful auditorium. This blister there looks like really bad, so it'd be nice to have it brought back to its original grandeur.
Terrific. I would make a motion that we appropriate the funds to repair the indicated areas, including the doors, obviously.
Second. Yeah.
Tim, I'm going to give that one to you. There was a motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim, to approve the request for the Colt Fund, use of the Colt Funds. Any other discussion?
Thank you. No, just I think it's so important that we keep that building, the maintenance up on that building. It's a, you know, it's a prized possession of Bristol. It's just, the architecture is unbelievable in there, and so I just hope we make sure that we get to the root causes of all these issues, so it doesn't end up being triple and quadruple the cost. And I would stick some sort of dog up there on the roof or something to scare that bird away if you can. I don't know. Maybe that can be included in the budget. I don't know, something.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
She would think so. Outstanding job. Thank you so much.
Great job.
Succinct, clear, and successful.
Yeah, Sarah.
Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda is I4, for executive sessions. Do you want to push that to the end?
Yes, please.
The next item on the agenda is J1, and this is for an RFP 990. This is for the sale of Nine Court Street. We did have a proposal opening today at noon on RFP of Nine Court Street. We received one proposal from Joseph M. Brito Jr., the sole member of Tupelo Realty LLC. It's been recommended not to disclose the proposal, so not to jeopardize the strategy and the negotiations undertaken on that.
We just need to refer.
Refer to the town administrator to act in the best interest of the town.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim, to refer to the administrator. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is J2, and this is for the request for proposal for 991, and this is for the sale of Oliver School. The bid opening was today at noon. We did have two proposals for the, for the building. Again, the proposals were Louis A. Prowl as manager for Timwell Holdings LLC, and East Bay Community Development Corporation. It's also being held, the amount of the proposal, not to jeopardize or strategize the negotiation.
Make a motion to refer to the town administrator to act in the best interest of the town.
Second. One, one, second discussion, Mr. Administrator?
So in this case, there are two proposals, and I would just like to urge the council, perhaps, to refer to the administrator, the town solicitor, and director of community development to report back to the council. And that way...
With a recommendation?
With a recommendation.
That was very nicely done. So move.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim, to refer to the administrator with those words connected to it. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is L1, and this is a memo from the solicitor's office in regards to proposed ordinance prohibition of smoking, vaporized, vaping cannabis in public.
Mr. Solicitor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Essentially, as you know, the General Assembly has authorized recreational cannabis or marijuana use in Rhode Island. There are certain things such as, you know, a referendum whereby it can be rejected, but unless the voters vote to reject that sale, it will be allowed. So we are in the process of recommending ordinance amendments to anticipate the possibility that would be there. And this is actually something, even if the sale of it were not allowed in Bristol by referendum, you'd still have the issue of people using it. And basically, the idea is to include the, the smoking of the recreational marijuana is included with the other prohibitions about smoking in public places. Right now, there's a kind of exception dealing with medical marijuana, so we want to make it clear that if it's recreational marijuana, you can't smoke that in all the places that you can't vape and smoke a cigarette.
If this council wants to take the next step, we would, this would go first reading it?
No, this is just for discussion. Your next, if you want to move on to what it would be to put this on for first reading.
At our next meeting. Okay. Counsel?
I make a motion that we approve this to be for first reading.
I will second the motion.
So we're going to put it on our next meeting for first reading? Okay, so motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim. Is there any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to know, are we going to be doing the zoning for this pretty soon as well?
Yes.
Okay. So that must be coming up pretty soon.
That'll be coming up.
Okay.
This was more of a specific policy thing. We wanted to run by you. I think the other world will just get directly to the planning board and have the planning board forward to you.
Okay.
The zoning, which will, I mean, it will essentially, it will, it will make our ordinance conform to the state law as far as distances from churches and schools and whatnot, which is state law now mandates. I think we will also, will allow the retail uses in the same sort of areas that we were contemplating allowing, you know, busy commercial uses currently, highway, our highway business district. And I think we'll apply some of our more stringent parking and traffic control management that we would see currently safe with our drive-in restaurant use or drive-in coffee shop use, because we anticipate that will be probably one of the significant effects is heavy traffic.
Right.
So that's what we're putting together.
So Diane, to that end, and to that question, why don't we make sure that gets in front of the planning board for their September meeting as why that is an additional item?
That'd be perfect. I was thinking the same thing, because you've asked them to look at the other zoning. Didn't work out well.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion?
You know, to the solicitor's point about the traffic controls, I agree 100%. I've traveled through Fall River, the, and let me tell you, day back, right into the street, they are way back, you know, and the line is pretty long.
Yes, I have, I have observed that myself, looking as a fact-finding thing, to see what was involved. It may be that the traffic issues are less when these are all over the place and everyone doesn't have to go to one store, but still in general, from what we've seen with and the literature and whatnot, they're still likely to be very busy businesses because people are not in there usually very long. So there's a fast turnover of clientele, so there's a lot of traffic in and out because of that.
Any other discussion?
Just very, very quickly, I spoke with chief about this actually, because I had just had a couple of questions, and he drew a very nice parallel. This is very similar to alcohol, the prohibition of alcohol. Really, that's what it amounts to, but he gives tools to the, to the police department if they come up on, you know, a situation.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Let's see, a couple of things relating to the ordinance. Yeah, I just, I keep hearing the word recreational marijuana, and I think it's a bad word to use. I think, and I'm going to be outspoken in the next few months. I spent 20 years as a police officer, and I think I've seen some of the tragic paths that marijuana leads to. And I, it just bothers me that we put as much emphasis on positive recreation. We call this, this cowering to our neighboring states, recreation. And I just feel very strongly about this, that it is not a healthy thing. If, I think we gave up, and for adults using this, I have no problem, but I think we're really sending a bad message, and I'm just glad that we are looking to pass this ordinance, and I hope that you all vote to limit, limit the use in public. It's not a healthy thing, unhealthy thing whatsoever. Marijuana is stronger than ever. You don't know what's in it, and I know they're trying to legalize it to make it safer, but it doesn't work. There'll always be a black market, there'll always be a cheaper way to get it, and I think it's a gateway, and the studies are not showing that it makes society any healthier. So I just, I'm not going to cower and say that what needs to be said. So I'm just glad that we are getting this ordinance ahead, head of the legalization of marijuana, which is coming. And I just feel strongly that we need to get this out in the open. It's, it's not a healthy thing, and it's not recreation. So I'm not lecturing to the council. I just feel very strong because I've seen where this leads people, and it's not a healthy thing. I know the chief's here, and I think he'll back me up on that. And I will say, I'm very disappointed in our reps and senators that are forward for this. Thank you.
Chief?
I just wanted, as your chief of police, I also serve as the vice president. In January, I'll be the president of the Rhode Island Police Chiefs Association. And we did send communication to the League of Cities and Towns, to all the mayors, administrators, and chief elected officials of each city, town, and asking them to adopt an ordinance. Very simply, as Councilman Texara put it, we're simply just asking the cities and towns to give more enforcement, the same tools as someone who have the drinking alcoholic beverages. We don't have people openly drinking at the town common or the town beaches, prohibited by town ordinance on our public, on our public ways. And so we're asking for uniform approach as it goes with marijuana. We're not looking to regulate inside people's homes, their backyards, or anything else like that, but it's the public right of ways, and it'll allow the police to deal with the situation. We've already, since the recreational marijuana bill had passed, already dealing with issues down at the town beach with people saying it's legal, and they're bringing it into the town beach, and it's creating some havoc already in our, in our, in our town. So that would be the genesis, as I stated. I have a dual role, and the police chiefs across the state uniformly have reached out and are asking for this to be adopted in all of the cities, cities and towns.
Any other discussion? I will echo what was said here, here. Well said. Perfectly said. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
I think that would be time to let it end, Mr. Solicitor. Pursuant to Rhode Island Rule 42,000,6182, we got a gate litigation regarding cases from Let's be male.
So moved. So moved. Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to go into executive session. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. If you're watching on TV, we say goodnight. If you're not, if you're here, we'll be back out of executive session to close the meeting afterwards. Goodnight.